Devil's Lake, for the purpose of discussing the LEC Center and its functions. We're gonna kinda start off tonight with the juvenile, the housing costs, and staffing. For the, for the start of the conversation, I'm gonna turn it kinda over to Lonnie Olson, and you know, we kinda would like to get everybody's opinion of, of what's happening and how to take care of what the problems and issues that we have are. With that, Lonnie?
As far as the juvenile detention that we're talking about, it's not like a treatment center where, I know historically there was a federal contract for the treatment program where we had teaching staff, where we had addiction staff that would deal with more long-term placement. When the county here is talking counties, we're talking about juvenile detention, we're talking short-term placement of children who are either charged with a felony or something very serious, and there's a significant risk to themselves or to the public if the children are released. So, usually you're talking very short-term placement for these juveniles. For, for the most part, they've been housed here in Devil's Lake. And now recently, they've been housed in Grand Forks, which is required our sheriff's office and police department to drive the juveniles to the detention facility in Grand Forks. And then we have to have a hearing within 24 hours, called the detention hearing, confirmed by juvenile judge. Then the sheriff is required to drive back down to Grand Forks, get the child, bring them back here for a detention hearing, and if the court orders that they remain in detention, then the sheriff's office has to take them back to Grand Forks. So it turns into, you know, five, six hours of driving time for the sheriff who takes the deputy out of commission for the day. As far as the housing costs and staffing, I'm not exactly sure what it has been until recently. And the staffing, as I understand, there's a number of different rules that the Department of Corrections mandates when you do have a juvenile detention center. You've gotta have it in a different part of the facility, or a different facility altogether. You have to have different staff, they can't go back and forth between adult side and juvenile side. They can't have connections where a juvenile can see an adult, so they have to remain separate for, for all safety purposes. As far, as far as the costs and the staffing, I'll leave that to the attorney.
Is there any input from Benson County's state attorney?
I don't think at this time, I don't think so. We know we need a separate distinct area to house these locals, short-term juvenile people like Lonnie Olson just described. It wells out whether you have the physical space, and whether you got the staff to facilitate that, and apparently it wells out whether or not we can afford to continue to do business like that.
I have a question. When you talk about different staff, is it staff that can move back and forth? On one day, maybe work with juveniles, and maybe a week later, work with adults? And also, does it take a, we were told it takes a full-time, separate administrator, is that correct?
Steve Egan, is that the...
When we had the meeting down here a few, like a month or two ago, that was one of the questions I asked Steve Egan. Do they have to, you know, is it off duty? I said, can, can a person that work on the adult side, and then we get a juvenile place in detention, have them book out of the adult side, put on a different color shirt, move over to the juvenile side, and book him there? And he said yes. As long as they're not working the same shifts at the same time.
Okay, that was kind of what we were told the other day.
That's, that was a question I asked of Steve Egan when he was up here in the same room here a while back.
Yeah, we looked back, and, uh, about the budgeting, he told us how much the budget was to do this, and we were told it would cost us $350,000 for separate staff and for a separate administrator. Now, uh, that's not the case.
I was at that same meeting, and that was the, the understanding that I got also out of that meeting, that they could punch out of the adult side, go over to the juvenile side, and punch back in, but they could not intermingle and move back and forth. So my thought was, why can't we punch out of the adult side, go into the juvenile side, and bring in a part-timer to put in here? I don't see the, the dollar amount that they keep quoting. We don't need to have four people and an administrator sitting around in an office. We can just pull them out of our full-time staff.
Okay, well, maybe you can answer...
A good point, but wouldn't you think if you need like 17 staff to handle our 100 adult population, there would be a requirement for additional correctional officers to be in the juvenile side?
Craig, could I ask you when the last time was that you had 17 full-time people on staff as corrections officers in the law enforcement center?
Good question, I, I don't know whether that would answer that one.
Well, I don't think it's happened in the last...
I think that's...
I don't think it's happened at least since January.
Oh, for sure.
Um, so why all of a sudden now, you have to have 17 people in order to take care of the adult side? I don't understand why the increased need for certified corrections officers on the adult side of the, of the law enforcement center.
My understanding, and Davey, Steve stated right out, you gotta have a lot more staff. Did you say what, 17?
Well, right now, we have 17 for the adult side.
Yes.
The thought is that if we move into the juvenile business, then there will be additional correctional officers needed. Is that an other assumption that we're submitting?
You will need separate correction officers, staff, juvenile piece of the law enforcement center if we in fact have a delinquent child or somebody that's hauled in from the region to the state. If there's nobody there, I would hope that person either goes home, or they're a corrections officer, that they would have other positions to fill. That would be an ideal scenario for this thing. But when there's a juvenile there, yes, that staff is dedicated to that juvenile.
Okay, so Jim, what would be the answer to my question then? If we determine that we need 17 for the adult side, would it not be that we would need one, two, three, or four additional correctional officers for the juvenile side? Is that just a...
I have no answer to give, and Steve Egan is not available in the state. He decided to be suspended, so if you have a female juvenile and a male juvenile, I would see that you would need two different correctional officers. I don't know how many each one could see, number-wise, but you've got only eight anyway. The date of birth, I understand. Correct?
And they have cell phones.
Yeah.
I think that one of the biggest things here that we're talking about though, is if we do need them, and if we do have correctional officers, then that are qualified to work both sides of the situation, whether it's juvenile or adult, no, they cannot mix, they can't work both sides at one time. They can't jump back and forth. But if they're qualified to work both sides, then I don't see the need to have a tremendous increase in staff. Because from, from everything that I've heard of on the model juveniles that are coming into the, the center, I, I cannot see where it's gonna take a tremendous increase in staff. And I don't see the, where you're gonna have to have a separate officer to watch a female or a male. Because do you know what, these are professionals that are working in the... Do you need it?
Yes.
Okay, if you do, you do. I'm, I'm saying, I don't know.
You don't need a separate, you don't need a separate...
Okay?
No, you don't.
I'm, I'm asking, I don't know. I'm, I'm saying, I don't know. But for, for the model juveniles that have came into the law enforcement center, I can't see a tremendous increase in staff.
What are you thinking, Mr. Johnson, we're only talking about two a day? I, I agree, and this is a moving target that we should be talking about, is the additional staff. And I don't think, and if I had heard that we needed a full-time separate administrator, that was not the case. But we need a, we need a separate administrator, there's no doubt about that, can't you agree?
Your statement today was, we need a full-time administrator, we need four full-time staff, and you told the cost to be $350,000.
Yeah, I hope I indicated that that was the initial shot at identifying the cost of running a juvenile. Oh yeah. It's something to do and discussion, such as what we're doing now.
You also have to, we also have to take into consideration, we're losing eight cells for adults, and the amount of money that dinner would be generated by having those eight adults would be gone.
I would assume you'd have a revenue from the juveniles, correct? If you have one juvenile, which is, or two, which is what? Where are we being at? What did we figure the average, I think we figured the average number of juveniles were gonna be one to two dozen a year for one or two nights each. That's, that's what we found out from looking at the cash from basically that's the county that's used.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the calendar year from November.
In 2012, there were 150 days, which we needed 2000. In 2012. And in 2013, we needed 233 days for we needed juvenile. Now, most of these days are typically one gender, on occasion we'll have two. Uh, if you, and these are some figures, Miss Ollie gave me, she calculates that it was $28 an hour, which is great, but, and I think she averaged, she took the whole salary pool and figured it was about $28. I had figured it was between $25 and $30. And so for a day, it costs you $672 for labor, for a 24-hour period of time. So that's your, that's your labor cost there.
Now, what, one problem I have, or one question I have, is are we gonna have staff that are gonna come in as drop of a hat to watch these kids? Because as far as going to jail, we don't have extra people over there. I mean, we don't hire extra people that are just sitting around watching the clock. They all have a job, they all have something to do. So if we pull them off, put them to the juvenile side, we have to replace them with somebody. Now, if we have a workforce of people willing to come in, day or night, anytime, and work, this'll work.
Well, that's, I think there's a difference areas you might be able to tell.
Right. And that's, that's why initially, we assumed we weren't gonna get people that were gonna do that, so we assumed we would have to hire special time staff for the juveniles. Now, as far as the administrator, initially, we were under the impression it had to be a full-time person.
That's not accurate. Yeah, and I don't think that's accurate, but I think what you have to do is assign somebody.
You have to assign somebody to be the administrator, and that would be part of their job.
You would assign a sergeant or a lieutenant, that would be...
They have, we have to have a separate person need, you know, that can do that. They're not, it's not gonna be an eight-hour day job, it's gonna be, you know, a two-day gap. So that full-time staff, you know...
Has your, has your former juvenile supervisor or administrator indicated that he might be able to go back to handling that position? That he would try to handle that position as he did before? I understand that when he lost that position, he stayed on full-time as, as a member of the, of the law enforcement center. And he didn't lose any, he didn't lose any pay or anything like that?
And we had, we had some preliminary discussion on that. Right now, we're trying to get guards trained up so they're able to. I mean, that's been, been the big hole up right now, is getting these people through the schools and getting them free. And we got, I think three of them came to school here, basically?
Sure do, two or three are still there.
And, and part of my issue with this is, you know, the eight, and, and we're looking at this too, and I know Commissioner Mertens had brought the fact that if we bring juveniles in, and I'm kinda speaking up with what I remember here, it does not have to go into a cell that's got bars on the doors. It can go into, we're looking at the modular building we have, maybe putting a couple rooms over there. So we can free up that eight-cell cell block, that cell block. Because if we put eight standard federal prisoners in that cell block, that generates over $20,000 for, or $200, I'm sorry. $200 a year gross, although it's expensive, of course. But we would lose that to have it open to house, you know, a couple kids once in a while, basically.
And if you're just gonna be serving in your county and the city of Devil's Lake, you're not gonna need space, at most would be four people.
Right.
And, and that would be an extraordinary circumstance.
I, I...
And in fact, you're probably, if you set up space for two people, that would probably be sufficient 90 to 80 percent.
That's what I'm looking at in the modular building.
So that's, that's the, you know, that's an alternative. Now, if you wanna look at some other alternatives, like if you were to talk to the lumps in Spirit Lake, you probably could fill up eight beds with juveniles, maybe even twelve beds with juveniles. But that's a different scenario, so there's different scenarios you can, you can work on, and you might wanna look at those alternatives.
The last I heard, heard of, the Navy Americans, is that they were going to turn Spirit Lake prison into juveniles.
I, I don't...
That's the last I heard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
And, and you're right, I, I agree with you 100 percent for it, you know?
But those are, those are the alternatives, but if you're, if you're just looking right now at your county and your city of Devil's Lake, you're looking at two beds.
I agree.
And, and most of the time, you're just gonna have one, you have to sometimes have one.
I agree, and initially, initially when we started talking...
I think Mr. Saderson, because he works for tribal social services, he might have something to go with it.
I talked to Craig, Ken, I was chief of police, DIA, the other day, because I heard this rumor that this fancy facility was out there for juveniles. So I asked, I said, Ken, I have a tour of this facility for juveniles. The answer was, we don't have one. That jails are adults, and the reason it's not open is because they don't have a kitchen here. It's not for juveniles. So that's a myth that we don't have to worry about.
And the other thing the board might wanna mention is that there's, there's a good probability that you're gonna lose your inmates from Spirit Lake, that's something, that they're gonna have that juvenile. So that's something else. But if you're just gonna serve the counties, and I think they're priority, and I have to emphasize it very, this is very important, we cannot do our job as effectively when we have to move juveniles back to the rest of the world. That follows us a whole bunch of things. It follows up assessments, it follows up, it follows up family having contact, it follows up us making appropriate decisions at appropriate times. So it is important to have juveniles back in the system. But if you're looking at it, go ahead. Do we have any idea how many juveniles would be from Fort Tatton, or... I think you would have to ask, but I think we have some historical data that would suggest that you could get eight beds filled up, because I think based on the number of juveniles that were from Spirit Lake, and from, right now, from Spirit Lake, they're shipping their kids out to Fort Virgil. And I have to emphasize something else about this shipping people off on distances. I think a lot of times, a police officer has to make very tough decisions. And even in the context of Benson County, or Eddie County, or something like that, where a deputy sheriff, who might be the only guy on duty, has gotta make a decision of, I gotta drive 200 miles to Grand Forks, or 250 to Grand Forks, or I can make a decision where I think this kid might be okay over here, and I might place him with a relative. Sometimes those decisions aren't very good decisions. And that makes a police officer's job a lot tougher, when they have to make decisions and whether I gotta go off duty and go off on some long distance drive, or do I make some other alternative decision? And that is particularly true in Indian country. Because right now, Spirit Lake are sending their kids off, I believe, in delinquency, off to Newtown, which essentially is a 200-mile trip one way. So that takes a patrol officer all of duty for a day.
I, I really think that one thing that we gotta look at, and I, I think sitting here as several county boards, we have to sit and look at what's right for our counties before we start looking at funding from the Native Americans. I, I think we have to look at taking care of our population here before we start looking at trying to make an income from the tribes. I, I really think that we have to take care of what we have here, take care of our population, and take care of our taxpayers, but at the same time...
I got, I got a couple things. We have committed to do the transports from LEC or these counties, you know, like Benson and Towne, doesn't have enough people to do the transfers. We have committed to do that. So far, since we've done that, I don't think I've had to do without the transport. So we have, we have some...
Well, I think there's some people also making some decisions that, because historically, I think they're gonna find that since we don't have detention right now, we actually have fewer people in Grand Forks. So people start making street decisions now. And those street decisions, you know, a lot of times are okay, but sometimes they're very bad decisions. So I, I can't emphasize enough that we need a juvenile detention facility in this area. And if you're just going to be talking about county, if you had two beds available, that would be sufficient 80 to 90 percent.
Can I say something? Just, just so everybody in the room understands, several months ago, or three months ago, when this first came up, we made the motion, and it was passed to, for the Devil's Lake Law Enforcement Center to hold juveniles as soon as possible. That meant as soon as we had three staff that could meet the standards, you know, so we didn't, the state didn't come in, want to shut us down. Last meeting, we made a motion to get beds to modify the modular building to have two bedrooms and space for the guards, or guard-to-guard, depending upon if you have one or two, you know, opposite gender children. So the board is moving in this direction, we're not saying we're not gonna do it, you know? That decision has been made. And I went through two months of meetings after, where everybody argued that we had to do it. The decision was made, we have decided to do it. The issue is the cost. And, you know, that's where we're at right now. We're trying to figure out a way to, like we said, get extra part-time people, bring guards in, whatever, you know? And still need, the, the government's coming up with a new standard that's called three, I know you're familiar with them. And they're out investigating some jails, nobody's meeting yet, but down the road we're gonna have them, so we're trying to get where we meet these standards.
Well, and I, I think, I think our goal should be to meet three.
Right.
But let's be honest, there isn't a jail in the state of Maricopa that meets those standards.
I understand you.
And there is, I think there's one or two that meet those standards right now. So that's something, I think, I think it's very important that that be your goal and objective. But at this point, I think our immediate need is, is for detention, and as soon as you can get that up and running, that would be appreciated, because I think that's what we need, that service.
And I realize it's taken a long time, I realize people are getting frustrated over it, there's some misconceptions out there, but that is the goal of the, the authority work for the...
But I, I also would suggest that you also be looking at some alternatives to, in the broader service area, because as you recognize, you know, all of the inmates in our local jail are subsidized. They're subsidized by the feds, the states, and so forth. In fact, now, I was just looking at the jail roster a couple days ago, and there are 103 inmates in the jail, Devil's Lake, I think it was two days ago. Out of that 103, less than half come from the counties and the city of Devil's Lake. So what you have is a, what you have is a system. And I was here when the first crisis at the jail was, before Mr. Johnson came on. So I have a deep appreciation as to what can happen to jail facilities. And when we're paying, are you paying $35, $30?
Thirty.
$30?
Thirty.
That's a ridiculously low price for an inmate. That's not, that's not even in the realm of reasonableness, as far as what other institutions pay. But you've had the benefit from a lot of work with people, working with BOP, working with the Department of Corrections. And I'm gonna tell you something, the Department of Corrections is looking for some other alternatives, lower-cost alternatives too. So I think there's probably resources, if you look at it, your halfway house may be another resource expansion there might be, where you might be given resources and things like that. I just think there's a whole bunch of things going on here. There's, there's a whole new realm now that some people don't understand. Incarceration may not be a cell block. Incarceration may be putting, putting somebody on a GPS monitor and a scram bracelet, which, how much would that cost? 10 bucks? 10 bucks?
Twenty?
Well, it's lower than, the actual cost you is lower than what you're charging. But that's another alternative, and that's something that the courts have gotta work on, but it's, but if you're there, those things can happen. Now, there's a lot of people that need to go to jail because they're dangerous. There's jail, there's people that need to be in jail or incarcerated for periods of time because they're a drug addict, and they need to get cleaned out for a period of time. But there's other things we can be doing. I mean, we, you have only seen the tip of the iceberg with this new DUI statute. Mandatory jail turns and takes of that nature. But those things, a lot of those, most particular, if you're employed, we're gonna be putting them on a scram bracelet and a GPS monitor, and we're gonna be able to control, we're gonna know where they're at, we can do real-time, we can do real-time following of them. So there's different options that we have, so we have to be creative in what we're doing. The old jail is, is not the same.
We already, at the last meeting, we, we have planned this, this way, every entry center, and the last meeting, we upped that deal to get them out there and get some new numbers out of us, and we're looking at that, and I think there's room for some changes in that, maybe we can do something with juveniles in that center along with that juvenile department.
Well, and again, I, I think our immediate need is two beds. The future need is, is that this actually may be a relevant source for you, and I think you should be looking at those alternatives. And if, and if you want me to help, I actually chair the tribal and state court community support, so if that's ever a topic you wanna go on the agenda, we have that discussion. I have access to a whole bunch of different folks that might be interested in that area, so those are, those are things you can do. And we might, but let's hope, I think we're supposed to be focused in on juveniles. Right now, from the court, we need juvenile detention, and we needed yesterday, so as soon as you can get us two beds to serve the counties that are part of the consortium, that would be greatly appreciated.
I thought Steve Egan and Dave mentioned, you kind of laid out the room, what the board's gotta do there for the four of you.
Well, Steve is going to be a consultant that you can rely on, you can say, this is what we're planning on doing, is that, is that reasonable? And he'll tell you what he thinks. So he's a very good resource, he'll give you good information. So those are the, those are the types of people you need to talk to. But if you're thinking about expanding, there's a whole bunch of other people you should be talking to. And like I say, for the immediate future right now, we need two beds.
A little bit of a problem too with the board is we end up spending time putting out fires before we're gonna get into the meeting thing, with the media and stuff causing us some problems here and there, and it beats up some time, the board being starting to take care of that kind of stuff too.
Yeah, it can be time consuming. But the other thing is, for the formation... But the other thing is, good information helps to relieve that problem.
Yeah, we get good.
And you need, you need good information. You guys, I think it would be helpful if you guys had some analysis of, of, you know, what's your daily cost, what's your stuff? And that was then distributed to the public or the people that are interested in that, so that they have all of that information.
These were the rules that came out of the conversation that we had with Steve when he was here that day. And these are the rules that started our discussion. Initially, we were talking about using the AED facility. After all, the employees came in, and they're, so that we had our site separation, could follow these rules and guidelines. And, you know, some of the problems that come up is that Kirk Weaver was our juvenile detention officer, and now he's going to be our PREA coordinator. And he told us at the last meeting that he would have time to temporarily take on those duties, but if he was going to try to bring us into the, into the real world with PREA, that he would be so focused on doing educational training and stuff like that for that, that he wouldn't be able to be this person. This, this document does say that there must be an administrator appointed by the government and board. So that's, those are the, that's where we started with the conversation. If we want to strip that down, we're talking about stripping that down now to just have the two beds. We're on that. We've been talking about that, trying to figure out how we can do that. And that would lower the cost. That would bring the available bed space back over, so that we could have our hundred and nine in there, and lower the cost of our daily incarceration rates to our counties and people going up out of sight. So that's where we're at with this juvenile detention conversation. It's evolved into, from being full-blown into being just a part-time thing. So I think that's... If a judge needs to have two people...
Well, that's the minimum. I would like to have more, but at this point, if you had two beds, that would take care of most of the, most of the cases.
Some of the, some of the rumor that they were trying to put that facility into, in Spirit Lake, into a juvenile detention center came right off.
I've never, and I just had a meeting with the president and the chief about a month ago about some extradition issues. And that never came up as a topic. The only thing they said about their jail is, once we get the kitchen up and running, will we keep in our gut? So that's, so I don't, you know, I have a conversation.
Yeah, and I'm not going to say that it's a fact either, but I did hear it from the private attorney.
Can anybody tell me, give me just a ballpark figure on how far away you feel you are from having, at where you can bring juveniles in, let's say a two-bed facility? Just ballpark?
We have to get the two-bed facility built first. I mean, the building's there, and I'm assuming it must, that we have to go ahead. We got to have the insurance, so we can go ahead. So just... As far as the guards, I don't know. We'd have to talk to the administrator and find out what the status is.
Is the administrator here?
Do you know what the status is on the guards?
The administrator's not here?
The three people we have in training right now, when they come back, they'll be kicked.
Just as, just as a point of fact, and I realize that PREA is going to come into fruition, but it's not tomorrow. The standard on minimum staffing ratios in secure juvenile facilities does not go into effect until October 1st of 2017. I find that a very poor excuse for not having the juvenile facility run. I realize it's going to take more than a week to work on it, but come on, you guys. That's almost three years away. That's over three years away. And you don't want juveniles there now because it's too important to get the PREA standards in line and operational? The law says you don't have to do it for three more years.
I don't think that was our intention at all. Our intention at that time was to house them in the eight-bed facility that we had in the jail.
And you don't think that if you had come to Ramsey County and said, in order to make this work, we're going to have to charge you seventy dollars a day instead of thirty dollars a day for juveniles because of the cost? And you don't think that your board of directors could have taken that back to their individual county commissions and city commission and asked for that raise so that you could remain operational as a juvenile facility? That's very difficult for me to swallow. You guys are talking five hundred dollars.
We had, we had no, we had no idea that it was going to cost seventy dollars a day in order to keep the facility running properly, so that we could house two juvenile. That is two separate issues. We would lose money housing the juveniles because it was an eight-bed unit, and we would be losing eight people that would be in that facility.
And you couldn't move, you couldn't move those eight people back into your general facility. I've heard you have a hundred and twenty-five people in your adult facility. You have a hundred and twenty-five beds, but you can't, you haven't had a hundred and twenty-five people incarcerated at the law enforcement center for many months.
That we don't have a hundred, we don't have a hundred and twenty-five beds. That's, that's temporary housing. When the sheriff, when we're pulled, the sheriff rings in, somebody says, I need somebody help overnight. We throw a cot on the board, and we need overnight. It's not long-term, we can't do it longer.
But when's the last time? Okay, how many, how many beds is in this facility? One hundred? Okay.
The other issue is, a couple months ago, we had the sheriff and the police having their people help us out because we were so short-staffed. Now, since we have to have extra people to take care of the juveniles, you're saying that isn't an issue? It wasn't an issue. We're getting staffed up now. We were told, the board was told, that we have to get these people down and get trained. Yes, sir, and I know, you can look at the ball. You can disbelieve anything you want, but facts are facts. We're trying to do things the way we're supposed to. That's what I was charged with when I was put on the board, is to try and run the prison the way it should be run. That's what we're attempting to do. We've been under constant attack for four or five months now. Like Mr. Turner just said, it's real hard to drain a swamp when you're fighting alligators. We've been trying to make effective decisions, and I think we have. We're trying to move forward. But every time we come up with an idea, get shot down, beat up, or thrown out of the press, and we're told it won't work.
I think, I think part of the problem is, the way I see it, and maybe some others do, is there seems to be a real lack of long-range compliance by the board and by the administration. You can shake your head all you want, but I'm telling you.
We're waiting for suggestions. Everybody's got ideas, but I haven't heard any ideas in four months that are viable for anybody.
You just heard the ideas, and I think those ideas would have been there three months ago, six months ago. We might have them. But I just don't think the board or the administration wanted to hear any ideas.
What you just heard, they're working, working.
Yeah, they're working on it now, but you're behind the curve.
We always have them working on this juvenile thing, but we have to have officers to take care of these juveniles. We didn't have them.
Tuesday morning, we heard that you needed eight beds, and where did all this come from?
Right now, the only place we have is the eight-bed cell block. That's the only part of the jail that's on-site and on a sound of the adult prison.
But two months ago, four months ago, six months ago, when the juvenile problem began, and you have to understand, it's not only the time and the money that we're having our deputy sheriff running the juveniles back and forth every time, but it's like, as Paul he said, it's hardship. For the families, I mean, it's supposed to be a service.
I understand it. Sixty miles back to work.
And I'll say it, I'll say it again, as convenient administrator, is I think the long-range plan, the plan just wasn't there. Otherwise, all these ideas, someone would have followed these ideas six months ago.
Have you heard what we have just said here?
I have, I have.
Okay, did we not say that we were looking at doing this? We have a plan?
I think you're, you are wrong, but I think, again, the long-range plan wasn't there.
Well, you're not at meeting. And unfortunately, that, you're not here, it's what we have to do.
I heard you.
And Rick, that's...
I think one of the saddest things that's come out of this whole thing is the administrator for the LEC isn't at this meeting.
She's not with you. And what is so funny about that?
Well, you know what? If my business was going under failure, I don't think that would be the time to go home, school, and ask my wife if she, if she wanted to go on vacation.
Medically.
I've only known, I've only known one person who has this locked in crucifixion, no one else comes. And that's exactly what you're asking this administrator. Was she requested to be here? No. Was she invited by Ramsey County? No.
Was she invited by?
This is what, this is the business. She should have to be invited to it.
I was invited to be here.
Was she invited by your board of directors? Were you, did your board of directors invite your two administrators to this meeting?
This is the business that she's supposed to be running. Wait a minute, what are you guys doing? This is the board of the LEC, is it not? We run the LEC. We don't need to have this bullshit going on from you guys.
It appears that it's just these people wanting to rehab.
I think she should be here to, to put on the discussion on what's going on with the LEC. I'm not saying to crucify her. I'm saying for her input on what's going on within the LEC. She's the administrator, isn't she?
Yes, she is the administrator. And if she isn't on leave, she's on the meeting.
That's also confusing too, because the administrator that worked...
You came up with the time for the meeting, not when she was here.
We're currently discussing housing and staffing costs. We don't, we don't have either of the administrators here. Either one of them are here.
Well, I have no idea who you invited. You invited people here.
Excuse me, I've got eight bills to pick up. I'll be in the car like a half, but I'll try to get this back on track. We've talked about the physical space. I understand, making the little tick. Do you know where you're at? And I asked a couple months ago, and I'm not, I just want to speak. I don't, I don't care if the judge calls me on this chair. I do it well.
You don't want me right there.
Here was, I asked a question, do you have, I think, staff hired? And I don't know who it was answered, but they have fully staffed, which then got off track with some overtime issues and all that. Do you know what their non-provision advertisement for hiring is? I'm assuming you guys need a two-month refresh, aren't you?
I'm assuming we're...
And I look over the hiring of staff, that advertisement for hiring is out there, interview dates, or, you know, I don't think there's been some issues of turnover, and I'm not here to talk about that. But full replacements, are there being worked for juvenile? Any update on that?
As far as I know, the big hangup was getting the guard we have now trained.
Yeah.
Once we get those trained, you were told that you wouldn't be able to house, you know, a couple juvenile prisoners. And that, that's what I'm hanging my hat on.
Might we need, might we need more people?
I'm thinking we're going to be more. I'm guessing that they're looking for more right now. Guessing, I think that's a fact.
Part of the staffing issue was that there was too much overtime. And in that type of a situation, it's 24/7, 365 business. And you always have people that are going on vacations. You always got people that are, have a doctor's appointment, or are sick, or something like that. So you're constantly dealing with overtime issues. And to answer Ron's question, yeah, there is some foresight, a lot of foresight going on in our business right now. We're looking at hiring part-time people that would be willing to come in and fill in for all of these short shifts and stuff like that, that are going to be caused by people who get sick, or have to go home for a kid getting sick, or something like that. And the juvenile, we're planning ahead and trying to figure out how we can make this all work together. And we do have long-range goals. We do have foresight into how we're going to staff, and how we're going to get all this training and stuff together. We're working on that constantly.
Okay, and I don't mean to delay, but are they pretty similar, your long, your short-term goals, range, plans, or whatever, so that each of the counties can get a copy?
No, that is, we can, we can put the paperwork together.
We've been talking a whole lot of meetings here. We could lead them out of minutes. I mean, what long-term goal is the addition of the reentry center? Because like we brought up, we know it's a progress, and we want to do that. We talked about going to have probably a year or half of it here. And we had so much, we had the first one built, so the interior issue and stuff, I don't know what happened, it just got kind of put on the back burner. And then Dick Johnson, the administrator, so we decided, wait, then we got a new administrator replaced, we got the other one. Now, we're sort of, we've got other issues, and people, that, that was the plan to that. As far as housing, the local juveniles, like I said, I'd be a portion of that three or four months, was if we withhold juveniles, short-term, so we could get them trained, take care of them. The cell block was never a big issue. You would lose money on it. But that's in reality, we're so vehement about getting us to hold the local juveniles, that I made a motion, and it was quickly settled and passed, that we do it as soon as possible. Okay? So that was what I thought. I was under the impression they had to go into a cell. And I apologize for my misinformation, or whatever. We found out, I don't know, what month ago, or whatever, two weeks ago, that they didn't need to be in a cell. They could be in a group, as long as they're watched, because they have to be in there. Okay, fine. We're currently using the modular building for the attendant care. Okay? We need to modify it, fix it up a little bit better, get a couple, two-beds, four-beds, whatever we get in there, so we can house the local juveniles.
Now, you say that you made a motion four months ago?
Yes.
Where was the administrator at? Not calling us up?
Well, we had, we had to get the guard trained. There's, there was limited training sessions, and I don't want, I don't know exactly, but it's not like, it's not like a training session, but on, once a month here. They're like, twice a year, or whatever, something like that. They'll, I don't know.
Yeah, well, three times, they're turning up their pay.
And they were told, we had to basically beg to our union. That was part of the issue, was getting people trained. The availability, availability and stuff.
And maybe part of that, I guess, the message coming from each of the board members, because we, unless I heard Ron on Tuesday, we heard that financially it was not feasible to house juveniles because of the cost being three hundred, thirty thousand dollars.
Well, can I?
Our facility required fifty thousand.
Can I, can I say that? Can I say something? In my personal opinion, no, it's not feasible. But I made the motion to go ahead and do it anyway.
We were told that there was a motion.
The facility's going to lose money housing juveniles until we can get it, I mean, if we can get it out in the eight-cell block, that takes a big load.
We were told, and that's why we came here.
Right.
And one of us, maybe, was we were told that you were not looking at that, that it was being completely unable to do it financially.
And you can, you can ask some of the board members.
I've had the chance to tell you, and that's the cause identified, but I also thought that we were moving forward to get them into our program, even though it didn't make sense financially.
But historically, that's not what your costs were. It's based on, based on an hourly rate of twenty-eight dollars an hour. Historically, the past two years, and this is, this is what you're, this is the actual time now, there might be a few hours, if that's what I'm right, but if you, this is something that on the soil, maybe it was twenty-eight bucks an hour, like I said. The, the actual cost would have been twelve months in 2000... In 2012, it was a hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's what your actual cost would have been if you calculated, that's your labor cost, at twenty-eight dollars an hour. That's how many hours we had in. So, and then the, for the other year, it was higher. That was, I think that was two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And that's not, no, 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 I'm sorry, it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand. It was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that's based on a, on a high-hour cost, eight dollars.
And that's the identified cost for the neighborhood. Jeff, that's the identified cost for the labor section?
That's the labor, that's the labor. Have handled it.
$156,000.
That's based, that's historic, that's historical data for two years.
So, just to be careful of that, and I realize that this is getting handled every time, and let's say we had one juvenile for 24 hours. Right. 24 times 28 is how much?
$600.
$600, $700.
$70.
That's what your cost is, that's what your cost is, 24 for one, for one officer, for 24 hours, at $672, based on 28.
That's what we said, when I made this motion, we will house juveniles, this facility will house juveniles, but it's gonna be spending.
Right. No, no, there's no doubt about it.
And it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be $60 a day, it's gonna be spending.
No, no, my suggestion, my suggestion to the board is that they charge, Grand Forks County is right now charging $125 a day. I think we should charge $125 a day. I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable cost.
What is Grand Forks juvenile population?
I don't know. That's what they're charging you guys right now.
If you're housing, if you're housing 20, I mean, when we held, when we had federal juveniles in here, we had 20 to 30 of them. We were doing long-term, we were doing counseling, we were, that was a profit center.
And I think, actually, I think if you, if you set up 12 beds, if you could have a 12-bed, a 16-bed facility for you, I think, and I'm just talking about pre-trial, I'm not talking about sentencing. If you, but I don't think you have to do that right now, but I think that's something you should look at. That's where you have a conversation with the term mom, you have a conversation with spirit play. That's where you might have a revenue source for juveniles, but the immediate need right now is a minimum of two beds. I think if you're gonna work in the trailer house and try to get, I think you can probably afford it.
Well, like I said, well, if you're getting cautiousness, most of the time.
So those, those are the things, you know, those are the things, you know, you can look at.
Jeff, you've identified a labor cost to house juvenile, one hundred and, what was the number?
Oh, for how many days, historically?
No, this is your labor cost that you identified.
Yeah.
A hundred and what?
Six hundred.
It was a hundred, it's $672 a day, and for the year of 2013, if, and this, this wasn't what your actual cost was. This is historically, in 2000, this is how many days you had children, juveniles in your facility, it was 233 days. So sometimes you had two, most of the time you just had one, so if you had two, you're doing better, if you had three, you're doing better.
So can I ask you, you take two times 233, you have 500 mandates that we would charge for them, 500 mandates?
It's 233 days.
And two a day, so this is say 500 mandates, so take whatever number you want to lay for a cost, and divide that in by 500 mandates. So that's, is it the 160,000 for labor, and can we say that the...
Well, the, the cost is $672 a day.
And the facility itself, because we don't have any bed facility, you grant that, you reduce the two, we've identified 220,000 as being that cost. Now, we're talking about now giving up, that's if you're not moving these kids to a different facility, but it's valid to talk...
No, no, you're, you're, well...
Because valid to talk that the eight-bed facility would...
If you're losing, if you're losing eight beds, and you're getting, you know, $65, $65 a day.
So I want to, you know, I have the problem, you challenge the number, so can you come up with a number? Let's mean that the labor cost, instead of the 320 that I told you, is gonna be 160,000. Okay, and the 220, 220,000 option is down, so we're saying, handling labor, handling juveniles, it's gonna cost us about 350,000.
Well, you're talking economically, you're not talking your actual cost, you're talking economic costs, is what you're saying. You're saying, you're saying because I've lost income, and I don't think that's really a fair thing to do when you're talking about a public service that's being provided. You are losing an economic cost because you've lost this revenue stream from other juveniles, from other services. But when you start making an economic cost, well, then there's, if you're gonna make that argument, then what you're gonna do is you're gonna start saying, "Well, let's not, you know, let's send fewer people to jail, because that's gonna cost us less." An economic cost argument like that isn't very, it isn't very productive, because it's not helpful, it doesn't necessarily deal with your expenses. But I can, I can see where the argument is, is, okay, I can make $800 with that eight beds a day.
220,000.
Yeah, whatever I can make with that, in a year.
Yeah.
And the argument will say, "Well, if I can get two beds over here, it might be worthwhile just to keep the adults here, if I got a place for juveniles."
And I think that's what we're talking about, we're finding a different place, we're freely, so we don't lose revenue on those eight beds.
Well, yes, yeah.
That's, that's, that's the kind of conversation we need.
And this is gonna come on later in the meeting, but our job as the board is to then try cost, try and control our costs. And when our costs go up, we have to explain to the board members that they're gonna cost more money, we need more money, and that, so it is our job to figure out these costs, economic costs, and it's up to the counties to say yes or okay, that or no, we operate at their discretion.
We're not happy to do anything, you know, we need to do it, as long as we can break even, something like that.
And if we, and if we had two beds again, we had two beds for juvenile, that would take care of most of our, for the counties and the city of Deboz.
When will you have all the numbers?
I don't have that, I don't have that.
What we're gonna charge the juveniles for? What's the additional cost? Do you even know the next month?
We're not gonna be more, we're gonna be in Congress terms now.
You're not gonna bring, you're not gonna owe us any?
We're gonna be more than what you see in Grand Forks.
We're gonna still pay $30?
They're paying them.
Still not, okay, the white paper is...
I don't think so. Right now, right now, our...
So we want, we want to give us 20, we want to sell them all, right?
Our next meeting is our budget meeting, that's what we have to figure out. Because right now, and my, my name was banned in about 90 minutes. Our projected budget, right now it's just a projected budget, just to, you know, based on what we know, talk about, figure out what we can shift figures and stuff. The LAC has shown a pretty good loss. And I sat and figured it all out by in May days, and what the counties have right now, if we were going to make up this budget loss strictly by raising that $30 fee, we'd have to go to $66. Now, we are looking at shifting one of the employees, we have an employee who's in dispatch center and the LAC, we kind of decide to stay in that, depending upon what you're doing. So we're looking at shifting that person back, I remember they're getting paid by the 911 center, because we just raised the amount, that's gonna show a little bit of project up. So, we're trying to move things right now, right now, I'll take it all, the financial administrator is supposed to be trying to figure out ways that we can deviate some of this budget shortfall. What can we do to save money here, what can we save money here, what can we save money here, to do that? And then we can figure out if we have to raise, I, I know we're gonna end up having to raise this $30 a day, because it's been artificially low for decades. We lost the federal juvenile program, that was a big financial, okay? We lost the state prison, if I understand the facts correctly, the state prison opened up there, so we lost some there. 911, well, that was a big gap, and they decided that they were gonna go up, they were there for what, five years? And quite frankly, that starts to cost them a lot of money, anyway, so what they left.
We don't understand, you have a great idea, you want an idea of how much to move it.
Exactly, I'm just trying to explain why.
And what's online as far as when we start looking for juveniles, we tend to kind of be hoping? We've heard two different numbers, and I've spent six, seven months recalling, I have one open, okay, we're gonna have one up on it. Come that date, it doesn't happen.
As far as I know, this board has never given anybody an A, as far as I am aware. When I made my motion, as soon as humanly possible, Commissioner Olson had to show that he wanted to put a date on it, I refused to put in my motion, because as soon as we put a date on it, all of a sudden we get, somebody in school, now we are the ones that screwed up everything.
Well, like I said, we just would like to have some kind of idea.
I appreciate that.
For real, for him, like today, and Judge Cody said that the officer making decisions on based on, okay, we're gonna have to run 200 miles down tonight.
And that's why, that's why the LAC is doing the transport right now, for the, trying to take the bonus off as much as possible, deviating at all, mine is to move the camp. I'm assuming they are. I believe we're looking at charges that will be charged to the federal prisons, so much of a mile, so much of a... I'm assuming there's gonna be a charge, it's not gonna be like a $50, but it's... That's yours, too?
Well, the decision would be easier to make, if maybe the board would give them a, the board should probably come up with a, with a figure for what it would cost. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty hard to say whether you're gonna do it or not, until you know what it is.
To be, to be a perfect loss, I'd say, I thought that was already come up with. I remember asking Peggy what it was gonna, what it was gonna be, and...
See, if I went into that meeting, and that decision was made, I, it was under the assumption that they were gonna do it to help us, and we charged, that's the assumption I had.
I think the records do show that, so, the minutes show that.
I don't believe so. I definitely, the minutes, I don't believe so.
Do you think that was talked about as a short-term fix to, you know, that he would use it silently, or somebody else can transport the child?
Yeah, and I missed some, some of the few of those meetings, so it's happened, decided, I know we decided to do it, but I don't believe that. When I'm in there, it decides to do it.
Somebody looking at this now, we don't know.
I mean, even though we do for a juvenile, that's not a fine for a hundred.
I don't know how much, you know, as far as that, I don't know how much work is gonna have to be done, it doesn't quite fit. I don't know what, I don't know what's gonna be required, that must be done, or hold it. We gotta get on that, we get to figure it out.
Okay, anything else along with juvenile housing, or can we belong to administrative discussion?
I'd just like to add a couple comments. I think it's a cynicism, and somebody that cares about kids, even with the tenant care, that trailer house is substantial. It's a modular home, those pets run fire real quick. There's gonna have to be an awful lot of work done in that facility, a safer facility. You need to keep in mind, you're dealing with juvenile delinquents, they have gone to the ways of getting taken. And if they're not properly searched, if they're not properly monitored, you're only increasing the risk to the board, to the kids, and to the community. And it's a tax figure, and I'm not here on any delinquent tonight, or anything like that. And I can attest that sometimes those hunts are quite revealing and quite positive, once you work through it. Once you work through it, they can be positive. But as a taxpayer, I don't mind my taxes going up, if you have to pay $66 a day, as long as there's quality, as long as there's quality. Because the facility provides the community with safety, it should provide the inmates with safety. And more importantly, it should provide the COs and the people that work there, safety. And, and I'm not on the delinquent, but when I look and read at some of the things that I've heard, the level of risk that I think the board and counties are at is substantial. There's an alleged case right now, which could very easily turn into a lawsuit, they've got insurance, that pays for it, you shouldn't worry about it. But how many of those can the facility withstand? How many can they withstand before somebody says, "The facility isn't worth keeping, let's just shut it down." Then you've got a real problem with inmates, the transportation, housing other places, lost employment, lost jobs, hospital expenses. I don't think the board can afford that, I think they make the book, and I agree, with a lot of forward planning. Now, I know you can't measure a negative, I know you can't do that, but when Judge Cody talks about the possibility of making a bad decision on a kid. And the officer decides, "You know what, I know little Johnny over here, and I'm gonna get him a lecture and send him home." And little Johnny, instead of going home, is upset because he got stuck and injured somebody. And I know you can't measure that, I know that you can't measure that, but it, it can be pretty costly. And so, yes, you have to look at the finances from the front end, but you also gotta look at the outcome, at the end. And you need to measure that, and so that there is community services. Two last things. When you look at, and you hear Judge Cody talk about the tribes using Newtown, you need to keep in mind that that facility is only so big. And that affiliated tribes, it's got a lot of issues going on right now. That may not always be available, so where are those kids going then? They're going down to Kyle, South Dakota, they're going down to Nebraska. And then what is that to, to complicate the problem and raise the cost? So, it's not very simple, as saying, "Well, you know, I can do one or the other." And I think that's what the caution about is, long-range planning, is that if you do that long-range planning, you do it right, you look at it, you follow it, you've got people behind it, you've got staff that have got good morale, that wanna push this through, it'll work. But if you don't, if you don't get that long-range plan, people don't have a sense of direction, if they're poor morale, I hate to tell you, Corey, it simply isn't gonna work. You're exposed to yourself to liability, and as a taxpayer, I have no concern about that, last night, and I'll shut up and rest in peace. And this is more of a rhetorical question, and I hope I don't upset anyone. A member of the board requires lots of different skill sets, but the biggest one is your presence. And I would hope that all of the LAC board members are religious about their inmates, and are at every meeting. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the administrative discussion. Would anybody like to start back? Ooh, we got quiet. I would like to start back then. I, at last meeting, called for the termination of one of the administrators. I still feel that with the amount of complaints that we're getting, I'm getting, the turnover of our employees, in my mind, is, we, the board should be embarrassed that we have the last 10-year employees, 15-year employees, 7-year employees, we were down to just five employees, that they can't see that there's a problem with the administrators. We, we fight when we fight, and we call each other names, but the bottom line is, we have, we have already tackled one of the problems, we have no vision, we're not looking forward. That's one of the big problems. We keep talking about this stuff, and going over, and talking, and going over. We've talked about the training, we've talked about all the things that are wrong, and we continue to talk about it, because it continues to happen daily. Now, I look around here today, and I see all kinds of ex-employees here, there's something wrong. And if, if one of these board members can tell me... And if, if one of these board members can tell me why we got rid of a 10-year, 15-year employee, we, we watched our 911 coordinator walk out the other day, and not one question of why she walked out, nobody questioned it. We've had other employees that have walked out, nobody's questioned it. I have an 11-page letter here, we never, ever talked about it in law enforcement and board meeting. It's ridiculous.
And I don't think we're going to talk about it here.
Oh, yes, we are.
I'm not talking.
You can't talk about it, you haven't been there. You have never been there.
Can I ask you a question, Mark?
Absolutely.
What's your answer?
To terminate the current administrator and start over.
Who's running the jail?
Somebody's going to be running on and closing it.
No, I need a plan for you, I've heard, I've heard.
A plan? Okay, let's, let's.
I want to know who can run the jail.
The sheriff.
That's my century code.
That's my century code, absolutely.
Is there a way to come in and do that?
I didn't say I wanted him to do it.
If that's the case, I want to, I just want an answer, that's my only.
I'm just quoting century code, that's who's going to jail. I'd like to advertise for an administrator, the current administrations can apply for it. But I found out we can't do that. We have a problem there, we have a huge problem there.
Mark, I have a comment to that, too. I've talked to different board members, law enforcement center, and the public, and said if they don't get rid of that administrator, they're not going to move forward. Something's got to be done.
Absolutely not going to move forward.
I've got lots of information here that I can hand out tonight, I've got a whole big folder full of it, and I welcome everybody out back, I want to start handing through them, because these are rebuttals to letters that have been brought up about the problems out there, and these are the answers right here.
Who gave you the answers?
And I've got these answers, they're rebuttals from Danny Deegan, there are answers from people who worked there, there are answers from people who are incarcerated there, and this one's a gratitude note, Mark, I'd like to read this one.
Who wrote it?
This is a serious offender, it's been incarcerated all the way from Florida to North Dakota in probably most of his life, and I want Mark to read that letter, because it's a testament.
I will read it.
How about?
Well, I can't really read it, because it's, it's written, and I can't read it. I will read it, absolutely.
I'll be reading.
Sure, you read it, and then you, then you read, I'll, I'll let you read this out loud, if you read Star's letter for Lagoon Nation out loud.
Well, we let you read your letter out loud.
You read this one, and I'll read, you read this one, and I'll read their letters. I have one right here in my book.
Mark, hey, I'm trying to say to this, I'm trying to say to this, please, he gives us some outside, uh.
Opinions.
What do you call this?
Opinions.
Counseling, or not counseling, but outside, and firm, to just oversee what can be done so you guys all can move in the same direction. I hear the board can't even give us a uniform decision. If you can get a consulting firm that would oversee the whole thing, and it'd come in and give you guys suggestions, give you a long-term vision, that might be the best thing you can do.
Absolutely.
And, and, and it costs money, but if it costs money, do nothing, so.
Absolutely.
Just not send Mike and Mark along the letter.
I agree, but here's a, here's a, here's a person that I talked to just today. This is a gentleman that is working for the North Dakota State Government, and he's a consultant for them, and he was a 15-year employee of the state medical entry, and him and some of his colleagues who are retiring from the state medical entry are going to start a consulting business, and they would like to use us as a pilot program because the state medical entry is going to be this more than a license. And he said he understands exactly what the problems are here, and he said that he would come up here and give us a real short synopsis of what, what we could do to improve the situation out there, and I've been in contact with him as recently as this afternoon. So, this, this letter, this letter right here from this inmate, point-blank says, Danny, Danny Deegan is a very, very valuable person in that jail, and we are going to be in serious problems, very serious trouble if she's terminated.
She's cited.
Yes, it is cited.
Would the law enforcement center board be interested in having a firm come in and look at things, and see if you can set up a long-range plan, see if you can get on the right track of administering this? It sounds to me, when you guys sit here and talk, like, who was it, said there's difference opinions amongst you, that's not leading, that's kind of like everybody trying to lead. You need an administrator to step up, set your goals of the board, and have the administrators pull it off, have the direction that they need to go, and that's what you want them to do. You don't want the board running that law enforcement center, you want administrators running that. Okay, well, I think we need to get to that somehow, and I like Mr. Leggins' idea, setting up a firm. Is the board all right with that?
Well, I think you need a firm that has some history.
Yeah, I think, I don't think.
Not a firm that hasn't, not even developed yet. No, you've got to get a firm with some sort of track or, you cannot hire someone that's just going to get moved together and maybe do this, no, they're out there, have your administrator look.
I would make a recommend date from Mr. Heiser, that we call Steve Ingham, and see if we can get him to set up a firm that would be suitable for this operation.
I think when you see this guy, this Joe, your resume, you'll see that he is very, very well qualified.
You need to remember that this is not just a jail. So you need somebody who's going to look at the page of the board, not just you.
I have, I have a question for Mr. Merk. You have, you asked us to look at a letter from an inmate, and I guess that's fine, other than the fact, I don't really believe that's the, the greatest resume for a same person as a great administrator. I mean, I, I'm a principal, and probably, I don't think I would go by my worst student. But I also have heard from state attorneys, from sheriffs, social service directors, have you visited with any of those and gotten any idea?
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
And, and positive or negative?
Well, you know, everybody has their wants and their needs, and everybody has their own opinions, and I think they should be willing to share, and we should be open-minded and not confidential. But I also, Ron, text messages that I asked about in the last week, we've got text messages coming for pages from the people that are working there, saying that everything is going much, much better. They're happy to come, we have people that aren't showing up for work, but some of them are happy to come in and build ships. Wayne's, Wayne's on board now, and he's working with them, I've got information from them saying that he's doing a great job, and they're, they're learning things, and.
I have a question for you, Bill. You have, you have employees that aren't coming to work, what, what would an administrator do with those employees?
Well, exactly what he says is good, and with the, she gives them a write-up, she says, tell them to, do everything he can to make.
Several, several times?
Mark, you know that's not the administrator's job, that's the captain's job, take command, take command, follow for each one.
I understand there's a chain, command, but it's also a new chain of command.
I don't know if you understand that.
Yes, I do.
There's been many times that you've been invited to come speak to Denny, if anybody doesn't know, my name is Paul Deegan, I'm the husband of Denny, and I'm just tired of seeing her slashed and drug-induced money. She has bled for this LEC, okay? The issue, I agree totally with what Scar said, well, it's not only a jail, the fact that she had to deal with the jail first was since such a bad mistake. They were down to the most lowest amount of individuals they ever had, they had people put in overtime, over and over and over again, staying with the dispatch, okay? But you got to come down, you got to see what the hell is going on. Many times you've been invited down, nobody's going down to see her, the only one to sit down there is Bill, checking things out, making sure things are okay. What are your questions? I just got done training defensive tactics tonight at the jail. You talked to other people that left, I saw four new faces tonight, the jail has a full-time staff right now, full-time. Cut down overtime.
I know I said full-time now.
You got people getting trained down in business.
Absolutely, I realize that. But I also got, I also get complaints, I also get complaints.
What's to get complaints, what's to get complaints, anybody's ever worked in.
But nobody's answering the complaints.
If anybody's worked in law enforcement, military, corrections, dispatch, halfway houses, you get 10% of a population that works for a job like that, and not over that 10% can handle that type of job, it's gross as a rug.
I understand that complaint.
No, things do.
Yeah, I do.
And not just you, I'm not saying that you are, there's a lot of people that don't understand, unless you've worked in social services, right?
So, social services is one of the entities that's having issues.
We're all having issues, I agree with you. So what's your question, what do you want?
Well, I want to know why, why, and what I asked Bill is, we have an employee that didn't come to work, so what do we do?
What do you do?
In business, you fire them, plain and simple.
Is that the policy? Is that the policy?
Most places, I'm pretty sure, if you go to Walmart, you don't go to work, Mark, you don't have a job.
Can that not be the same policy, somebody's not calling Freddie Paul a patient?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would like to announce tonight, I sent a formal complaint to the county general office for separate investigation into any and all civil and human rights violations, as well as other issues. A copy has been sent to Senator Hyatt Kemp's office, I unfortunately did not get to COVID's office fixed and linked. A complaint has now been established with the American Civil Liberties Union, the individual complaints for the ACLU should be done by next week. Copies of this will go to the New York Times, part of it is already gone to the Florida Forum, and some loads of Southern economy laws. There are some egregious things that have not on present administration watch, but I've asked for investigation, full forensic audit, and if any, it's going to trail, that should have taken place with public employees, which by the individual, state elected, county. But it's going to be very, very.
Mr. Merk, as I still reiterate, that Benson County, as God on record, is not being
pleased with the administration, because of, we visit with our social service workers, state attorney, sheriff, all professional people, and also some of the things that are going on at the law enforcement center, so.
Can you, can you provide me with a list of, of these grievances, so that they will be addressed?
These people are here tonight, I mean, have you talked to your social service director?
I don't know, basically, but.
Commissioner Carlson, you think it's a reasonable idea to go ahead with an outside firm to investigate and come up with long-range plans for the law enforcement center? If we can get Steve Ingham to probably give us some, a list of firms that would be interested in doing this, is that agreeable to Benson County?
No, we will have to meet and discuss it.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, the two problems we have, number one, I said at the beginning, and I really feel there's a shortage of long-range planning, and it starts with your administrator. It's not the board's job.
Commissioner Blocken, do you think it'd be possibly agreeable in Nelson County?
Well, Steve Beck, that's more for your juvenile detention, right?
Well, for this long-range planning and, and get a firm in here to look at that, and look at the law enforcement center, things we can do to improve it, would that be agreeable to Nelson County?
Right, we talked about all that.
Absolutely, yeah.
And he could do well, he got a better, and help you.
Nelson County would be agreeable to that, you think?
I think it would. We'll discuss it.
Eddie County would be all right with it?
It'd be fine, but I think.
Okay. County?
Go for it.
City?
Yeah, I think that's the direction we should probably go. Right, we need an independent. We need an independent look at it, yeah. Well, absolutely, I agree with you. Life's too short for that.
Chuck. I, I just, I promised, I wasn't to say that you know, I promised I'd call it back. I want to address something from Mr. Deegan, the president. As an ex-employee, and as I look around the room with a lot of ex-employees, Ted, that we have all bled, not just Danny, we have all bled in lots of different ways, Ed? Not because of the inmates, not because of the working conditions, not because of all kinds of different things. But most of us have bled in not being supportive.
I think it's only waiting.
So many times, I couldn't even tell the number of times Danny has said, I don't like juveniles, I want a lot of them. And there are a lot of people sitting around this room that will back that up.
Dr. Hope.
My plan, excuse me.
Wait.
When, when you hear that, and you're working with a juvenile program, it doesn't really bolster your morale. And then if you're like, too many juvenile program in, and it gets shut down, that would have provided a funding source for juveniles, that would have lasted until zero, and before it could get implemented, the juvenile program, the federal program was taken out, Christie and I returned the next day to the last day. So, all of us, all of us, I don't care who's fault it is, but there was also no effort to recruit other federal juveniles, and the specialation officer had ten kids that he didn't know what to do with, and we told the administration about that, nothing. So, all of us, all of us, not just Danny, but everyone sitting around this room, because they have given it their all. When I'm sitting here by Star, I saw Star and what she did, I saw how she worked, I saw the commitment that she had, I saw how many times she sat there, hour after hour after hour, and the people didn't show up. And my guess is, until Mr. Brown went and said the other day, thank you, that's probably the first thing to do, that's unforgettable.
I'm sorry, Chuck, I didn't mean to interrupt you. One person that was called Ms. Heiser, and has called Mr. Ose Olsen, to Tom, who is a third-party removed, who has excellent references, credit, is Dr. Gray Hope, who worked with the juveniles in hell for, I'm not sure, Chuck, how, how long.
I couldn't support that vote.
Well.
I'm sorry, I'm just being, I'm just.
All right, well, that's, that's yours.
Okay, let's get back to it.
We've got a lot of stuff.
We got a lot of stuff to go, absolutely.
We're supposed to be listening, only we're going to be here all night.
Yes, we are, okay.
Dr. Hope should have called that, as an emergency.
Okay, moving on, if they're agreeable, but are, all these counties are agreeable to get a consultant in city, counties?
Can, can I ask if, can I ask if the board?
Can I ask if, can I ask if the board will be open to whatever the determinations are of this outside consultant that you hired? Can I ask that you try very hard to-
They will.
Take what they say hard. We, the differences in opinion between each and every person on the board is a mile wide, and I think that that's not unfair to say that. And I find that, I think that people have lost respect for each other over it. And so I feel bad about that. But I would again like to reiterate that if you're going to ask for direction, please take it when you get it.
My problem with, with some of the disputes is, is we've had some, you know, let's do this, but there is no action plan that, what are we gonna do, I mean, okay, fine, let's fire Danny. Okay? Well, first of all, let's, let's verify what the rumors and innuendos and accusations are. Make sure that they actually happen, okay? And then if we're gonna do that, I need a, I need an idea of who's gonna come in and, I mean, are we gonna put this up for, you know, go out and recruit and wait a month and a half? Nobody running the till? Is the sheriff gonna come in and run the operation? I mean, who's gonna administer, you know, administrate the jail while this is happening? I'm not in favor of firing her for the main reason is I wanna see some proof of what's going on. She's reiterated, like Mr. Murkens has said, a lot of the issues that have come up. Now, I'm not saying I agree with everything, I'm not saying she's right, I'm not saying she's wrong. But I wanna see some, you know, we need to investigate this a little bit.
Well, I think that firm will do that. I think that's what we're looking for, yeah. Like Mr. Dubner says, you know, we gotta get rid of this. We gotta, for the betterment of our communities, we need to get this settled and move on, you know? We just have to.
Seven. Seven.
I just had one comment made. You know, two years ago, this facility was, this law enforcement center was, I don't know what you wanna call it. We were asked down at the convention, county commissioner convention in Bismarck, Williston and McKenzie County were thinking about doing a joint jail out there. So they come to Joe Belfer and I and ask us to meet with them and tell them how we were running this facility, and it was like, because of the, everybody thought this facility would be the best one in North Dakota. And here we are today, probably down at the bottom right now. So we need to get this thing turned around. If the council is, you know, this consulting firm, or do that, I'm in favor of getting, we gotta get it turned around, we can't like stay where we're at.
Kenny, you took up the seven-minute turn?
Well, six months away. That's what happened. And I knew that was gonna happen, I argued with Dick for two years. Dick will probably tell you that, that I didn't want him to quit, that he was, you know, doing super job, and running the super jail. But I knew, I knew he wanted to retire, and get away from the thing, enjoy himself. He had time to the coast and drag it in.
Well, the commissions in the counties and the city, we just need to try to do the best we can.
Yeah.
We need to get the answers and-
You know, Danny made some mistakes, I'll agree with that, but I think Jeff will do it. I mean, she's made some mistakes, she's not gonna be perfect. And she's gonna do things a lot different than Dick was, but that's, you know, that's where there was a lot of upset around here.
Part of the issue, we had some other issues surface, I mean, there's, in my opinion, there was a power struggle.
Oh, I do.
And then we got some people making some unfortunate decisions as far as some of the incidents that happened. I mean, guards, I mean, two guards quit because they suppose-
Well, is everybody agreeable with letting Steve Ingham look at this and try to find us a firm? Or give us a list of firms to pick from? And Ramsey County has the biggest stake in this, I think we should lead to find this firm. We'll surely keep you people informed. And if we have to have a joint meeting with the counties again, will you make a decision on who we should have?
I got one in back row there first, Jim.
I have a quick comment. This is as complicated a situation as I've heard, and, you know, thirty dollars a day, you can't get a motel section for that, that's gonna margin for nothing for a long time. I mean, it's probably not reasonable, you've got professional staff, not just me, it's making sense. So, I mean, fundamentally, I'm hearing budget through, under like a lot of us. And secondly, in terms of consulting, I don't really support that. But you have to be thoughtful on what you want them to do. On one hand, I heard strategic planning, help us put together a plan. That's a whole different expertise than it is trying to figure out the conflicts. I worked for an agency a while ago where there was a lot of conflicts. And to a point where we tried a lot of things, tried consulting, and ultimately management brought in a consultant. And they interviewed this side and that side, and they interviewed a lot of people who were conflictual and didn't know what to do. And they really came up with a reframe that didn't necessarily agree with either side of stuff. And said, here's what's really going on, and what we would recommend you try to do in business. I mean, it really is about getting away from disfavorization and coming up with a plan to deal with conflict and moving forward. But that's, how different is strategic planning and putting together the picture? So, that's all I have.
I agree, if you want, I'll contact, if you have to, do this sort of vacation, since I got some email, let me know what I need to do anyway. I'll ask him, what, give him the scenario, we're looking for a consulting firm to deal with the two separate, maybe not the separate issues, but combined. And I'll get that back to Callie, and then you guys make a decision on whether-
I think the directors of the LEC should be reviewing these.
Well, I'll get you the, I get you the focus to review, I'll put it that way, I'll give you the list. If Ingham has got one.
Alani, can I ask you a question just for a quick? Are you investigating illegal access illegally to the nine-one-one? As you mentioned, over the LEC board meetings, that wasn't, it was about legal access of, I put it, mention it, one of the board meetings. It was one of the board meetings that someone at the, in the LEC building had asked for a background check that was not one of the parameters of the law. Are you doing full investigation on that? Because my understanding from Peggy and Stephen was that this was handled by the chair.
What you're referring to is a triple I background check?
I believe so.
That would be a, an issue with triple I. It wouldn't be a criminal investigation necessarily for me.
Is it legal violation or?
Well, law enforcement does a background check, they usually give it upon law enforcement.
If, if, if the implication was you were not in a legitimately legitimate law enforcement?
Well, I didn't get anything in writing, what I got was a statement from Conny Meyer, which not helping you with this.
I was just curious.
Moving on. Is there any more about the discussion of the administration?
Okay, I got one more thing, Mark, and I think it was mentioned at the last one. We all want to ban billings, family services, and with this kind of turmoil, I would think that would be real helpful for all the employees to be able to have access, and they have confidential access to counselors through that program, to help everybody get through this. I mean, once you start ripping hearts and souls, you need some mending, and we just can't keep doing this. Let's start by, see if they'll come in, I know they'll come in, because that's what, that's what we hire them for. Get them involved so that we can start the healing process on the inside also.
This is the same little bit today, David. And they have been here and done some work in the Law Enforcement Center, back when they were having issues with the employees. But they have a counseling, they have a group that would do this too. And I don't know if Ramsey County's part of that or not, but I know the law enforcement agency is part of their group. And they do have a group that would do that too. But I, whatever you find out, I'm willing to go with whoever you come up with.
We absolutely can check into that. Any more discussion? And I, I do agree with you, I do believe that Dan does lead for that center. I know that she tries her hardest to do her best job. I just don't know if that's the job for her, that, that's all I wanna say about that. I don't believe she has any ill will towards the center. But I, no, I don't believe she does. Okay, moving on to budget and financial reports from the Law Enforcement Center.
Have much time to look at them, so.
No. Has anybody got any questions regarding the statements that we got? We didn't get a lot of time to review them today, so. Questions or comments? Nobody, okay, we'll just move on from there.
Ken, I just have one question, and I'm hoping Betty can answer it. As of our last, as of the last time you checked, what has been the total cost to Ramsey County for the Law Enforcement Center to be for our fiscal year? Now, I'm, our fiscal year is different from the Law Enforcement Center's fiscal year?
You're talking, you want from January to July 31st?
That will be.
Okay, our cost so far is 252,774, and that includes the money that we give them at the beginning of the year.
And how much did we budget for?
325.
325,000? So, we got 73,000 dollars to spend for the rest of the year. Can you understand where-
That's in July 31st, yeah.
Yeah, so we have, we, we have, you know, roughly 73,000 dollars to spend for the rest of the year. That's September, October, November, December. Gonna work? How about you guys, I mean, I'm, I'm open. Kenny, tell me how much money you've spent this year and how much money you budgeted. I, I just need to know.
We're fortunate, we're a power company, I guess we don't have a lot of inmates in here, that's, you know, I don't know whether it's lucky to be that way or what, but it's, you guys are unfortunate, you have a big cost combination, you have to make around 50 in there. That costs money, when you have 50 of them, it's pretty difficult.
Right. And Craig, I mean, houses, budget-wise, let's talk about budget. How is the city doing?
No, I'm looking at my-
I guess that I, I tried to get a number from Terry, and he told me that you had budgeted 120,000 dollars for the Law Enforcement Center this, for this year.
That's her budget.
How much have you spent so far?
Based on her budget.
I don't have a budget right here, but I think you can actually look at another 60,000.
Okay, but how much have you spent so far this year?
Well, one of these reports when this came out, I mean, I haven't, to agree with God's report from the other day, never read it again, but one of these reports, I had at the Law Enforcement Center on there. Looking at through July 31st, 2014, if we last recorded. I think that's the last one. Yeah. Uh, city, 50,025.
That's what you've spent? That's what you've spent? So you're probably in really good shape then, because you have over half your budget left for the Law Enforcement Center. And those are just questions I, I wonder when I, when we talk about the budget for the Law Enforcement Center. And I don't know what Eddie County has, and I don't know what Nelson County has, and I don't know what Benson County.
Okay, I've done a little bit of work on this, and what I did is provide out what was spent according to our figures last year by all the different counties for mill, and how many prisoner days they had, inmate days. And right now, Ramsey County is getting, they're spending less per day than anybody else. And it's because of the huge number of prisoners that you're putting in. And like I joked at one of the meetings, you know, I blame the sheriff, you know, I blame sheriffs for aggressing everybody. But the fact of the matter is, Ramsey County is, I mean, they have almost a third of the prisoner days up in jail is Ramsey and the city double late, you know?
But that's not surprising. That's not a surprise.
No, 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 I understand it, I'm just saying, well, that's why it seems like you guys are spending huge money in the city.
But I, I think that's to be looked at too, whether you have one prisoner in there or if you have 50 of the prisoners in there, the lights have to be kept going. So I, I think operational costs have to be spread more equally than just by a prisoner count.
Okay, can I, can I give you an example though? Right now, if my figures are correct, then I'm, I'm, they might be off by some pennies. I, in 2014, Ramsey County spent 34,41 cents a day. When you figure in your mill levy and 30 dollars a day. Okay? On the other end of the spectrum, because they have a low prisoner count, Nelson County spent 83,72 cents a day.
Okay, but are, are you looking at everybody's mills being equal?
No, no, I'm looking at the mills that were, that we collect. We got a sheet right here tells us that last year Ramsey County, one mill was 38,106,9 cents. Okay? You divide that out by 8,637 inmate days, and you come to 4,41 cents a day. That's what the mill paid per inmate day for Ramsey County. Add that to 30, you get 34,41 cents a day. So, I mean, I did that, and I knew this discussion was gonna get there, and I'm not trying to coin anything one way or the other. But the reason Ramsey County and the city double late have such, you know, huge costs, it just basically is a number of prisoners that's, it's down to that point.
Oh, absolutely.
And the fewer prisoners you have, actually, the more you pay.
Right. So you, so Eddie County then is probably paying 500 dollars.
Uh, no, actually Eddie County, we pay 42,57, because our mill levy is half or a fourth of what it is. Our mill levy is only 10,000 dollars, or was, uh, 10,243.
What was?
But if you figure for capita, you know, it works out, I mean, we're the smallest county in the state that we have basically a way to structure the speed of, or attach the value. But, I mean, when you look at all these figures, and, you know, in first blush, you go, it's only cost Ramsey County to pay in the whole bill, well, if you figure prisoner, you know, per day per prisoner, it's, you're, you're actually, compared to some of the other county, you're getting far. I hate to say it that way, because it doesn't make sense.
You're not really doing a very good job of sugarcoating this.
Right.
You're just not doing a very good job.
I'm just saying facts from facts.
You're not out at the DQ.
And to tell you the truth, I mean, does that mean Nelson County should pull out? No, because next year, they might get somebody that's convicted a felony, be in, and give a bunch of extra days. I mean, my county, one person being in there a year, just drives our costs from, you know, through the, same.
Luck of the draw, huh?
Yeah, luck of the drive, exactly.
A couple years ago, we had a guy spend a year there, it's kind of expensive to spend, you know, really.
Right.
Besides you, many of them.
But you're being awesome, we don't.
But you guys, that must be the highest number you've had in Ramsey County.
Well, we knew this was gonna happen, we knew our, our incarceration rate was going to go up by sheer, by sheer knowledge of the fact that we hired a drug task enforcer person.
But they say they out-arrested that man.
And that, that gets into part of the problem with the, with the jail too, is the fact that the percentage between locals and, and non-locals, in other words, state and federal, used to be like this. Now it's able to be here. So we're making less money on locals as opposed to the, I think, the current university of one-time status. You know, and that's not, that affects our modern lives.
But the federal government is getting smarter, right? Yes, they're getting smarter, the federal government, on these federal prisoners, you know?
Well, the, 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 the whole fact of the matter is the jail is primary for, primarily for the local prisoners. We fill up full, we have less prisons.
We got to provide services. We got to remember that.
I mean, that, that, it was there for the law. I mean, obviously, if we want to make, make money with prisoners, we draw all the law. We'll say we're not involved in any, we can fill the full effort, we can make good money, but we wouldn't be serving its purpose if we were fine with that.
Yeah, a lot more people missing this room. If, if we're going to lose the cost per day for the county, that needs to get on, so we can put it in our pocket.
That's what I'm trying to get to. What, what, what do you want us, how do you want us to put together a budget? I mean, your financial administrator called my auditor and wanted her to help her with the budget. Well, how, how would she do that?
That isn't what the question was, Murrah, was she, she just wanted to know that they were dealing with the same numbers due to our differences in when we budgeted our budget. So, we're trying to match up with that. And she was just asking what numbers Elizabeth uses when she looks at the jail bill compared to the numbers that you give to her. And they found out that they are the same.
So, she didn't really need any help with the budget?
No, it's basically talking about the incarceration bill and, and if it would go up to a certain dollar per your per day.
That per day has to go up though because, oh, we know, yeah, the ten years of that kind of commissioner, that is the only thing that is staying the same. Everything else we deal with.
I think it's more like twenty years, isn't it? It's twenty years.
And the whole thing is we made good, you know, the, the, the jails made good money on the federal prisoners, juvenile prisoners, you know? We made good money on all these people. We were able to keep that artificially low. Now, because of, like I said, the loss of some of the other programs, we're not going to be able to do that. So, it's going to have to go up. The question is, we don't know how much.
And, and I, and again, I, I suppose I'm going to sound like I'm picking on someone, but my, my concern through all of this is the fact that, now, I never heard a word about the law enforcement center until April camp. So, don't think I've been on a witch hunt since last September. Nothing could be further from the truth. I went in and told those two very hard-working people that they really had some difficult times ahead of them. And that was months ago. My, my, my point I'm trying to make is there is, this should have started last September. When Dick Johnson retired and those administrators took his place. They should have sat down and they should have said, you know what, guys, we're going to lose nine hundred thousand dollars here in about three months. What are we going to do to recover some of that income? Nothing. Nothing's been done. You've had suggestions from all kinds of professional people who know about jails and prisons and ways to make money at them. Nothing's been done. That is my concern. My concern is not trying to defame someone's name as someone has been trying to say here. My concern is that administrators are not administering. And what has happened is I think that you board members have seen that. And I, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you feel bad about it. But you can't administer for them. That's not your job as a board member.
I can answer that with one statement. If we had twenty empty, twenty empty beds sitting in there that weren't filled, yes, I would agree, something should have been brought in. We have, we don't have empty beds in there. Because the local population base has been under eyes. You know, the only thing we have empty right now, or I don't know if it's empty or not, you know, the eight-man block is not filled right now or not. Okay, who'd have prisoners in there? And we're going to empty, empty that, or we would have had emptied because, you know, that's, that's what I, we're swacking, what you.
So, there, there are no other ways to make money? So, so, so all of this fault here. Well, I was thinking about popcorn at the front door of the courthouse tonight because I thought that might help. But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is vision.
I'm, I'm open to anything that can be done to lower costs.
We've already discussed that we were going to hire an outside entity to, to check into.
The reason we're looking at that, just to the reentry center, that's another, another case. It's been real good for us. The reentry center has been a good, we made some money with that, it works pretty good.
Did you just say that she was swacking? Is that what you said? I just want to clarify.
No, I, I said I was swacking.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. No, I, I, the thing is, I mean, that would be, like I said, I made the motion, how, how juvenile back four months or whenever, I don't remember the exact date. But one of the concerns I had is we were going to lose the income out of that eight-man cell block of over two hundred thousand. And, and I knew, I knew that, we were told that we were going to have my issues this year, we didn't have. We didn't see it coming. But we couldn't figure out what. Uh, I, it's worse than I thought it was going to be. Because we have to give pay raises to keep people and things like that. I mean, all, and all that.
How's that been working?
No. We're staffed.
Staffing now, waiting for us to get. You know, your line staff. You're short number one. So, your line staff.
Who, who also got a ten thousand dollar reward that you earned.
Have you been short number one for many years? I'm just saying. I, I, I agree with you, we are short.
But what I, what I'm trying to say is, is that on the, on the wages thing, you know, Craig, you very eloquently beat it into my head that you had lost nine hundred thousand dollars. And in the next breath, the board implemented a thirty percent, give or take a percent or two, across-the-board raise for the entire staff. I don't know about you, Craig, but if I didn't have any money to buy milk, I'm sure we wouldn't go out and buy a case of Bacardi. I, I, I don't understand what you were, what your thought process was and what, what you were doing. And I think all this does is destroy morale with your staff.
The consultant we brought in says that the people we raised that thirty percent, let them in mid-market for our market area.
And, and you know, I'm going to counteract that with this. I sit on the district health board. Um, last year we gave them a five percent across-the-board raise. And this year we gave them a one hundred and twenty dollar a month across-the-board raise. They will now almost make it to the bottom of the pay scale for the state of North Dakota.
And are you running, is that organization running a third staff like we were?
What are you, what are you talking about?
Mark, we need to move on. We need to get consulting for this stuff behind us. This is the first problem with milting.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't need this problem, but I just don't under, my problem is I don't understand. I don't understand how you can do that.
Well, the consultant maybe will explain that.
We appoint these to the board to make those decisions and, and if we're going to get a firm agreement too, so just keep going on, all right?
Nine-one-one slash LEC operations. Bill, would you like to take this?
What do you want to know?
Pardon?
What do you want to know? I don't know what.
Well, um. We were, we're short-staffed, we're down. Our administrator.
We put the job description together today and will probably be in the paper tomorrow. I talked to Sarah over there and she has applicants that didn't know exactly when to set up some these.
The only problem we had in that, in that area, especially starting rates, it's twelve dollars an hour. Why don't they go to Walmart and stay out there for half eleven dollars an hour? Why wouldn't you go to Walmart instead of sit behind the telephone under all that pressure for a dollar an hour? That was one of the reasons we had, had to raise that area immediately. That was ridiculously low.
Mr. Murkens, I, I raised that issue yesterday on the phone and the resignation of Clement Truitt. And I guess whatever's going on in the LEC, we've got nine-one-one. The importance of that dispatch, law enforcement agencies, multi-county is really, really critical. And populations are trained over the last twenty years, you know, if your, your cats are trained, call nine-one-one. So, grandma's calling nine-one-one, do we have to ask the people in there to respond with the resignation of Clement Truitt? And that was my concern. And I, and I don't know how you're advertising for it, but you just said, this bothers me. You're, some applicants have already come in, get the advertisement. Is, is the job announcement out?
Well, there's two different job announcements.
Okay, so there's several positions, or at least two positions in the nine-one-one arena. And then, then the effectiveness of the advertising for that job placement. I'm sorry, a lot of people probably don't subscribe to Double Lake Journal. There are no fans of the journals here, believe me. I, I, I know they aren't, you know, maybe they aren't looking at that, but where else are you utilizing jobs? Any of those other places? You're, you're sure you are?
Yes, I am positive.
And when do we?
And we also, we also talked about, just in the last week or so, that we're going to reach out over some teletype or something like that and, and look for, look for some people.
Out of state. And then there might be some really good people sitting out.
You know, in-state, well.
Is your human resources director working with that?
It was, yes. It was mentioned to me that there might be some people that are working for Botno County or something like that, or, or Ruckley or something like that that would be willing to move to Double Lake now that we have more.
When are those positions, applications for those going to pose? Any idea?
Well, one for the dispatch people just love constantly paper.
To continue it.
They're always going to look at for people. And it's a wage thing, same issues that we're dealing with with the others. We are working on enticing the app a little bit or doing something to make it so that it makes it a little bit more.
The board, the board, I, I mean, I think I've been on seven years now and they were short-staffed then. And we've heard the tweets me behind it, and I, I believe it. Nine-one-one dispatch is a tough job because you come in, long job, you know, if my kid gets sick, I can call the boss, I can go home quick, you know? Nine-one-one, you can't be here or there if you're locked in the building basically, unless you get somebody to come in for you. And I don't know exactly how you get it. Plus, it's hours and hours and hours of work, and the routine stuff is followed by two minutes of game excitement and a decade hour of boredom. Plus, the dispatchers never find out the end result of what happened. Because I'm on ambulance, I mean, we don't call in and say, yeah, the guy died. I love to do that, you know? I mean, you talk about a, gee, this is exciting job, well, no.
I don't know if it's an exciting job. All I'm saying is a very critical piece and.
I agree with that.
And even from the investigation portion of that, I want to call according to that. And so I have, you know, you have my support if you need to beef up whatever it is.
My, my joke is I'm on fire and ambulance, fire at least if you can see this ball, or we're lost. Ambulance, you, you know, so we need good management.
I, I agree a hundred percent. I, I've been on our local ambulances for thirty years now. And I have the absolute utmost respect for the people that work in dispatch for nine-one-one. I, I'm sure within there, they probably do sit for extended periods of time with nothing. But do you know what? It's every one of our parents, it's every one of our children, our mates. Every person driving through here are dependent on them people. I've used them, I've, I've been on the outside of just taking calls from them. And, you know, it's not just calling and saying, hey, Scott, you got to go to seven seventy-seven John Lewis House. They, they've got to know what's going on because to me, knowledge is power. They do a great job in there and I'll tell you, they, we got to take care of that place. To me, that is by far probably the most important part of our county that we have. I think it's more important than our highway departments or, or deputy departments.
Mike, what do you think about dispatch? For five years that I worked here, I saw dispatch not just respond to those crisis things that you're talking about. But there are the eyes and the ears of your family. They allow people to come in, to go out, they keep track of looking, they're looking at things, seeing if there's problems. So, it's not just they're sitting back with their feet up on the chair, you know, saying, well, I went and had four calls just now. But there is the whole, right, keep track. There are people, human services are checking here, uh, just keep, they got to keep track of them. They got to make sure that they get the C O L there. So, there are people who might see some things other than just responding to calls or just the excitement. So, I didn't want that to just be a.
It's a pivotal part, it's a pivotal part, part, and it's like the two. However, I go through the nine-one-one line of entries. I cannot expect any state, federal, city employee, county employee to use their position to strong arm racers nor any other thing in their position that this county, city is facing. Period.
I guess probably the next question that I have is, why did you just lose the, our head administrator of nine-one-one after fifteen years?
Look closely, very closely, and you'll find.
We never discussed it. We never discussed it, Scott. She was allowed to quit, walk out of him in fifteen years of dedicated work.
When was it? I want to give her the last fifteen marks. First I knew that Starr quit was when you held up her letter of resignation and you missed her hand.
Do you, do you want, do you want me to explain why? I can, I, I, yeah, well, I can explain why Starr gave her that letter. Starr gave me that letter because she was afraid of the consequences that would happen if that letter got out prior to that meeting.
No, I'm just saying, I, my, my point is I, I don't know when we could discuss it.
We should have discussed it right there.
There was a strong identification.
So, okay, moving on. Absolutely. Review the joint powers agreement. Lonnie or Jim?
All right, Dave.
Review the joint powers agreement.
Lonnie, you reviewed it, so you go ahead.
I didn't take a review. Under state law, jails are required by counties to develop and institute and share to administer. State law also allows for counties to enter into cooperative agreements for jointly operating jails. Cities also, and that's why those joint powers agreements were together. If you go back to the early seventies, Ramsey County needed a new jail. Ramsey County and the city of Double Lake played together, were together in the law enforcement center. So, I understand if you look at the deed to the property, it's jointly in the name of Ramsey County and the city of Double Lake. And the other neighboring counties were brought in to part of the joint powers agreement for the sharing of, of the facility for the purpose of keeping costs down for taxpayers of all five member counties and the city of Double Lake. And that's the nature of the joint powers agreement. But it lasted for highs, I believe, in about two thousand and five, two thousand and six.
Do you think it's advisable to sit down with the following, with the counties and, and review this with their state's attorney?
You know, whenever you're involved with an agreement, parties can always negotiate or renegotiate, you know, that's, that's one of the options, that's your legal counsel, that's Mr. Wang, or Mr. Tennyson, or, uh, Mr. Peterson, or Mr. Avery, you could talk with their commissioners about, um, that's, why would be a question of policy for the boards? Can you? Yes, you can. Should you? That's up to you. Other questions or issues or problems?
It was just brought up at our meeting that we needed to review the powers of agreement.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, that, that's all that was basically said.
Maybe you should put it on a five-year schedule.
Maybe, yeah.
Just like, just like you would do for an RFP or something, for some other administrative thing.
Absolutely, take a good idea.
Constantly.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty loose document.
Yeah.
Other than that, Ramsey County supplied one, built a facility, so they have two on board, and the city of Delph Lake has two on board, and the rest of us have one. So they, both entities in Delph Lake and Ramsey County have more authority than the rest of us, more, more voting power.
Okay. Like I said, that, all it was, was asked to be put on here tonight, so we could bounce it off the other counties. Does any of the other counties have any questions regarding the joint powers of agreement?
Our, our state attorney is not here, I did, he, he did, he knew yesterday, and didn't put it in.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, like Tim said, lots, lots of things change all the time. One day we'll flush with it, and the next day we don't have it. Nothing further on the joint powers agreement? I request, from the Ramsey County, I'm their, their board member, I'm gonna be absent next week, I would, would like to have an alternate pick my place on the board. I have reviewed it, it is up to the commission, Ramsey County Commission, if they would like to delegate somebody.
I'm making personal.
Is there any meetings, can we? Are we gonna have? I believe next, next Monday, so third, Thursday.
Second.
Right?
Yeah.
Second, second, okay. Just, just in case something comes up off of this meeting or, or whatever, I would just like to have a, an alternate there until I return.
I guess, my opinion, Mark, is whoever Ramsey County decides to be perfectly fine, as long as when they come in, they identify themselves as they.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So we know.
You'll know, you'll know, Murna, right?
He's had that's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, Scott made a motion.
I made a motion for it, to be a substitute. And you, there's a, there's a.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion, and a second.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. I, same sign, motion carried. Is there any other business to come?
And I, I hope that, I hope the counties all realize that, since I've been on the, the authority board, as always, if, if one of the other commissioners, if wasn't a board member, came in and had a concern, feelings.
Yeah.
Let them wish their opinion.
Yeah.
Push it to a jury.
Motion, sir, second. Get it back.
I have other questions for you.